Chill.
Chill.
I'm Laura.
I'm Laura. Oops.
Oops.
Can you do it? Do you make it? No. Down. Yeah.
Yep.
Have we seen?
We see.
Katie come back on?
Yeah, I see her.
Oh, there she is. Okay. All right, seeing as it's 6:30, I will now go ahead and call this meeting to order. Everyone could join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, through God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do have two agenda adjustments. I have two items under 7.2 that need to be removed off the agenda for this evening as they weren't ready. So that would be policy B E D B dash R agenda format. We will remove to the agenda this evening. And then policy I M B B exemption from required instruction will also be removed from this evening as it wasn't completed. Any objections? Okay, we'll move down to two consideration of the minutes 2.1 to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2024 Board of Directors Meeting. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing as there's none, I'll call for the vote. Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Laura? Laura?
Lawrence, yes.
Thank you. Nicole? Nicole? Is she here? She's muted. Okay, now she's not. There you go. Thank you. Kristy?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you. We will move down to public comment. I will give this opportunity to allow the public to add. If you would like to make a comment to add into the chat and then we will go ahead and call on you that way. NJ or Katie, do you see anyone? No, okay. For petitions and communications, there are none. We'll move down to five reports, 5.1, the superintendent's report. Could I just have everyone who's not speaking, just go ahead and mute yourselves so it's easier for us to hear the person who is speaking? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, and I wrote myself notes. Now where have I put them? Um, okay, so update, just, I wanted to say I saw the Merry Wives of Windsor. Marco and I enjoyed the wonderful performance and seeing the kids, I mean, that was a tough play with Shakespeare. And they had a lot of disruptions in performance practices and so forth because of the weather and lots of things going on. But I have to tell you, the challenges brought out the best in everyone. They stayed in character. It was just excellent performance. I really enjoyed that. Then Sam and I have been very busy meeting regularly with directors and principals around budget. So part of our routine is we talk with administrators around the process, which is really doing their budgets on needs. What are the needs? You know, there may be wants, but we have to really weigh out priorities in what's going to go in the budget. And then what we do is we meet with each principal and we go over each line, go line by line. And, you know, we heard loud and clear that you would like notes, more explanation of what's in that line. So we're working hard to provide that for you. And then we were also meet with each director and do the same thing. So really making sure we're clear on what's being asked for. How does it support the district's goals and mission and their work at their buildings and in their classrooms? So that's what we've been working on and we're continuing to do some more meetings on that as we put the budget together. Workshop day was fun to go around and see teachers and staff engaging in a lot of professional development opportunities. The middle school, and I'm sure they'll all talk about this in the reports at the next meeting. But the middle school brought in the main learning technology initiative MLTI staff members to do some PD on using different apps and different strategies, adding to their toolbox on the engagement of teaching and learning, especially with computers, with the technology that we have. And then over at Kerry Ricker and Libby Tozier, they were engaged in a mini workshop that was put on by their teachers. So teachers submitted, staff submitted ideas of what they could present and then other teachers signed up. So learning from each other, from learning the different math strategies to technology, to how do you play capture the flag? To, for learning, writing, watercoloring and guitar. They also at SBS, they were doing a lot of their goal work at Sabathis Primary around looking at their behavior plans with Swiss and PBIS and raccoon tickets. They were looking at safety and their goals as well for individual students. So looking at their response to intervention work that they've been doing. And then high school also looking at their goals. They've been putting interventions in since the first NWA administration. And so targeting different skills across content. So they did some reflection on that, reviewed the work they're doing. They looked at cell phone policy. They looked at study halls. So there was a lot of work to be done based on feedback from staff. So been very productive last two weeks.
Thank you, Katie. We will move down to Assistant Superintendent Report with Kathy.
I won't go over workshop because Katie did a fabulous job going over that. We are in the midst of doing WEADA testing. So WEADA access testing is done for our English as a second language learners. We have six in the district. So I will say a heavy lift to Jen Lane, who is our ELL coordinator, as well as our tech to get everything ready. And always, there's always issues with the different systems because you need three different systems to talk to each other in order for our students to get tested. Some of our younger students get tested on paper and then the older students get tested online. And it's always a nice coordination between ELL and our administrators to get all our students tested. We'll get, usually we have testing, window opens in January, goes till end of March, but we like to have everything done in February. So just kudos to Jen Lane and everyone on the team that's getting that done. We're also in the midst of doing NWA testing and finishing that up. The window closes February 2nd. So you can be looking forward to our winter benchmark data coming to you in February with the principals. We were able to get a, we got a grant from First Book Marketplace. We got $800 worth of books really about grieving and loss. So after the October shooting, a lot of different places had reached out of like, how could they help? And so we did ask about grieving and loss. Ironically, we've, we already got the books and we had a student who lost a cat and has already started to kind of read some books. So it's not really just about grieving and loss of person. But Jane Seeley did a nice job helping me pick which books would be appropriate. And I see Heidi Black on here, so she'll be able to get some new books in all the different libraries. So we picked some that were appropriate for each age group. So that's exciting. Last Thursday and Friday, our teams that are part of the DOE grant for PBIS attended a conference. I will say I, I was, I was sick and didn't attend, but I got a lot of feedback from our DOE folks that our teams are doing a fabulous job and are probably ahead or are like the exemplar of how to, how to do things. We had a team meeting, our district meeting today for pre-K 12. And they were saying that they're sending people to our website of how to do things. And we were having a lot of visitors coming to different, our meetings that we have, whether it's the district or the school teams, just to see how you get started and how you implement. So just kudos to Dustin and Michaela and their teams and the hard work of implementing those positive behavior supports. I've seen, I've got some emails about power school grades, most specifically about the middle school. So I just want to remind you that in K8, we are standards based and we are grading students based on standards. And there does not go to a, they're not passing a course. So there's no course averaging to get a course grade. The only time we do that is in the high school and that's because we are awarding credit. So when students and parents are looking at grades, especially at the middle school, you will see grades for standards, but you will not see everything averaging to like, how am I, am I passing English? Well, you pass English by showing proficiency in your standards. So I just wanted to remind you that has been our, our practice. And just kind of wanted to remind everyone that you will see, and if people are having a hard time viewing their grades in power school, they should be reaching out to their classroom teacher or their school. And they can show them how they can drill down onto those standards to see how their child is doing. In the food service world, we've had our food inspections from DHHS and we have passed all of those. As well as we got a supply chain audit. So I just wanted to thank Ashley and Sam who helped complete that audit. We've not been audited for a supply chain, so we were able to do that seamlessly. So just kudos to the team for their hard work as well.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, we will move down to 5.4, Director's Reports. Norma Jean for Technology.
There, can you see the screen? Okay, everybody?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Remote, we got rusty after a couple, you know, one night of not having Zoom. All right, well, welcome everybody. Hope you guys are all warm at home and safely. I just wanted to give you a little bit of update on the technology side as far as we're working hard on the budget, working with, you know, everybody at central office and also working with our technology coaches. So just to kind of recap, each year we have a certain number of technology coaches at each school. And so they get together two or three times during, usually the spring, winter, spring, to look at all the instructional technology that we have within the budget to see, you know, everything staying. Do we have a new request that needs to come in? Are we going to vet that? Is something else moving out that we're not using anymore so that we're being responsible for every purchase? And then it goes, it goes along with our strategic plan and also works well at our one-to-one classrooms. So what we're doing, just to kind of like recap and streamline the process, that we're trying to be as responsible as possible within the budget. We do have some money sitting in the CARES S or grant that we're shifting back into the regular budget. So we're looking really closely at what is in there, you know, bringing that back in. It did bring that line back up, but we're looking each and everything in there to see what we can bring down. Other things in the technology budget that we can, you know, you know, put up to the side for a little bit or, and just try to balance things out. And so right now they had their first meeting tonight, which was amazing. And so they're starting their evaluation process, not just of the new, new titles that have come in since COVID, but everything. And so we divided everything up and they're going to be reaching out to admin teachers, in some cases students, to see how that's going. And then, and we talked about, you know, the cliff that was kind of created by the grant ending and how we're going to balance that back into the budget. And then the overall thing is to, to bring that information back to the M team, the A team in the schools and see what's going to be inside that budget. So it's pretty fluid right now, but I wanted to give you guys, you know, a little history on that, on that, how that works. And so the big thing within this is just to communicate and make sure building admin peers, everybody's in there. And that our decision-making is made by the data, like how each one is used, how it ties to the standards. Is it showing progress for our kids? So if it's math or ELA, are we seeing growth? And then that it matches what we're doing as far as our technology framework within the school. And you guys are going to have to say, next slide, okay?
I was going to do my next question. Thanks, NJ. Next slide, please. Transportation will be discussed as it looks like 7.4. So I'm going to report on facility maintenance and then emergency management. So for facility maintenance updates, last week we did have some SPS heat issues. I just want to touch on that. Had a stretch of cold nights. And so with cold nights comes more regular boiler cycles or burner cycles, right? So the boiler is going to be running harder more often. And with that, we did find some, some issues within the burner. We had Siemens out promptly every time that we had an issue and got the heat back up and running. Primary source of the problems had to do with fuel pump pressure. Because again, the oil tank is underground, so it has to be pumped up to the boiler. And then some really hidden hairline porcelain cracks on the electrodes, which is just basically something that sparks the fuel to light to start the boiler. So those things have been since addressed. I had a meeting actually with the service team with Siemens this morning. That among a few things were just areas that I really wanted to focus on again and just have a good eye on. And then something that we can talk about in the future if we need to address anything at a, at a larger scale. And the Oak Hill High School Science Wing, as you can see on the pictures on the right, that is Ryan Crocker's science lab. So these pictures are a week or two old now. So there are still some, some newer things there. But as you can see, all new cabinets, countertops, sinks, the little black piece in between the cabinets is, is drying racks for chemistry beakers and things of that nature. So the status really there right now is just some final touch up, a few things on back order out of the control of the contractor. We're just waiting on, I know NJ was in there earlier in this, this week, working on getting some technology items put back in there to make it a more conducive learning space, of course, and back to, you know, original. But if you ever pop your head in there, it's night and day compared to what it was before, obviously even before the ceiling fell apart and everything got ruined. But it is a nice refreshing change and hopefully makes the learning environment, you know, exciting for, for the kids in the lab and certainly for, for Mr. Crocker. And then ceiling insulation, so over in the, I believe is a world language wing of the high school. Is that the, is that the name of the wing? No, Katie's saying no.
It's English, the English math wing, but mostly English.
Nope, nope, the wing.
You're not talking about the, I know what you're not talking about.
No, not the tiles.
Not the tiles. There you go.
So there's a wing of the school, a little bit further past, I believe, history where it takes a right towards like the hall towards tennis courts, right? There's a section that was terribly insulated in the ceiling. And to avoid another break like we had last February, we had that all insulated, not only for, for keeping the sprinkler pipes warm and things like that from freezing, but then also a protective poly barrier, which helps with air infiltration, which ultimately is the cause of these breaks. So the cold temps certainly don't help, but it's the direct airflow on heating pipes, plumbing pipes, domestic water, things like that that cause the break. So that has since been addressed and almost within half a day, the hall was 10 degrees warmer. So it makes a huge difference, which is awesome. Next slide, NJ? Oh, I think you went one too many. So emergency management updates, for those that don't know, another part of my job is also an emergency management coordinator. So certainly always keeping an eye on anything and everything with emergency management as it relates to our schools. And so one thing that I think everyone kind of remembered from last year was the, the COPS grant or the School Violence Prevention Program grant. So I just want to touch on that again. That is opening up very soon. I actually have a webinar tomorrow, so I was hoping, wishing the timing was better, I could have given some better, more, more, you know, information on it. But I just wanted to remind everyone what that grant was that we are applying for and then what we were planning on doing with it. So it's a maximum 500,000 award per individual who's applying. There is a local cash match of at least 25%. Usually it's, it's right at that 25 and not any more. So if for easy math, if we got awarded 100,000, we would have to put 25,000 towards the project. The plan is to, again, Burkada access cards and district rekeying. Again, you know, just to have easier access into schools and better control and accountability of the keys. And just for some good stats, four schools were awarded in Maine in 2023 and they averaged 365,000 in grant funding. So I thought that was some good information, promising to see some schools and schools all over the state, big, small. So good, good, you know, promising information. Next slide, NJ? And so just an implementation timeline and it benefits to the card access. So the grant award is typically October. I'll find out for sure tomorrow when we do the webinar. But it's typically October of the year that the grant opens. The plan would then be to have the crowded door access controls installed, installed upon grant award. And then we'll do an SOP review with building staff on how they, how the key card entry system works, how we expect, you know, the cards to be used, all those kinds of things. We'll do physical key turn in and access card issue. And then after successful transition, we will rekey the exterior doors to each building and physical master keys will be issued to, you know, at a limited capacity. You know, part of the reason that we were looking to do this, of course, you know, first and foremost is building security and student staff safety. We are, we're having some trouble with key accountability, keys being shared, losing keys. Innocent or not, it's, it is a safety risk. So it's just something that this, this project would help with. So again, benefits to the card access, again, first and foremost, students, student staff safety, accountability, knowing who's in and out of our schools and no more lost master keys, remote door permissions. So if a facility is being requested to be used by say a rep program and something last minute changes due to weather remotely from say my house, my office, I can adjust the parameters on the card and allow them into, into the building, you know, on a, on a different schedule than planned. Integrates into existing cameras, so we can actually put a face to the name of who's, who's getting in and of course just ease of access. So just again, from an emergency standpoint side of things, the grant will be coming up soon. We plan on revamping the application that we had from last year based on some new current events, both in the country and our state, and then as well as some suggestions from some grant writers. So we can really try to pursue this grant fully. So that's it. NJ, next slide for whoever's next.
Good evening, everybody. Can you advance, NJ? I wanted to talk since it's budget season about one of our budget lines, contracted psychological services. Next slide. So I want to give you a little bit of background on why we need psychological evaluators. More often than not, psychological evaluators are contracted for one of two reasons in public schools. It could be that students never had an IEP and we are considering initial eligibility for special education. And the other one is re-eligibility for special ed. The student already has an existing IEP. Next slide. So looking at re-eligibility, students have to be tested again or at least considered if they, if they are eligible, at least every three years. Sometimes we do it to some services, some extenuating service circumstances might have us do it after one, but generally it's at least every three to reevaluate for continued eligibility. So IP teams get together and they decide what evaluations they need in the areas that are relevant to the area that that student is identified in. Next slide. And the second reason is someone suspects a disability. So someone has put in writing called the referral form that they have concerns that the student's not being successful. Could be socially, could be emotionally, could be academically. An IEP team gets together and reviews that detailed referral. And then that IEP team may decide to order evaluations for more information if a disability is suspected. And more often than not, that is the case. We do order evaluations. Next slide. So the evaluations, uh, consist of many instruments. Uh, they are testing very specific to autism. There's more than one test available to address behavioral concerns such as something stemming from PTSD. There's a couple of tests that, uh, focus specifically on cognitive processing. If we're thinking about a learning disability, there's tests geared to anxiety and rating scales. There's tests geared to phonological processing, and then there's also a risk assessment, which I'll talk about later. Uh, next slide. So the contracted evaluator, uh, gets the data for the testing from many sources, and this is very time consuming for them. They meet with the student and more often than not test the student. Uh, they talk to home and school when in terms of interviews. They send home rating scales and get those back from school and home, and then they review the student's file as well. Next slide. Whoop, back one. Thank you. Um, and ultimately they submit a written report and in that written report, which could be anywhere from 10 to 20 pages, there's the background history that they've gleaned about the student. Uh, they've interpreted all the different tests that were done with that student. And then they've offered a diagnostic impressions, i.e. what the disability, if there is one, what it is. And then they've made recommendations. Next one. So the cost of one of those, uh, reports generally averages between a thousand and $3,000. Um, I'd say it's geared more toward the lower end, but we have seen them as high as three. So just looking at how many reports were generated, uh, it's hovered right around, I was surprised to learn this hovered right around 102-ish on an average. So looking at 2021, 21, 22, and all the way up to now, and we're up to about 71. So it might be a little higher than normal, but it's, it's probably not going to be much more than that. Next slide. Um, so these licensed professionals in the area of psychology also attend IEP meetings. So we pay them to do that as well to present the evaluation reports. IEP teams can review them themselves, but we generally don't. We want someone looking at that report, uh, with a very keen expertise eye to decide if the instruments were valid, if their diagnostic impressions make sense and, and everything that goes along with that. Next slide. And then, uh, RSU four currently has contracts with three psychological evaluators. There's a group, um, out of, um, Eastern Maine, up in the Bangor area that we use that has, uh, more than one evaluator that they might send down to do multiple, um, testings in one day. And then we have two, uh, gentlemen who are in our central Maine area, um, who we contract with as well. And I think that's it. So thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, NJ, if you could go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Uh, so first thing I just wanted to talk about, our athletic leadership council wanted to, um, just a refresher, that's my, uh, student athlete, um, leadership group. We wanted to try to find a way to start recognizing athletes of the month. So, uh, we kind of put our heads together and figured what was the best way to do it. Ultimately, we decided we're gonna, um, request coaches to nominate one athlete every month. And then with those nominations, we met as a student athlete group, um, and voted on, um, one of their peers to become the student athlete of the month. So December was our first recognition. So we'll be honoring them, um, at the next student of the month assembly at the high school. And then we also talked about, you know, how could we incorporate this to the middle school as well? So that same group is kind of working on that to see how can we start trickling like that high school leadership council into the middle school and just knowing that, um, you know, athletics at both groups face different challenges. Um, but you know, we're still have the same goal. So we're kind of working through that together. So some things looking forward, um, for athletics. Next slide, NJ. Uh, some kind of exciting news. Uh, last week we got word, um, from the state fire marshal's office that we are okay, um, to reopen the weight room. Uh, it's been a lot of communication back and forth. Uh, we did get it in writing. Uh, long story short, they essentially said that because the space was grandfathered, um, it's not technically right for it to be shut down. They do encourage that we still move forward, um, with the renovations, which we're going to do, but we can just kind of like pump the brakes a second and cross our Ts and dot our Is and, um, not be in such a rush to kind of get it reopened. So, um, it was reopened this week. Students were able, um, to utilize it again, and we're still gonna kind of move forward with those renovations as planned. Next slide, NJ. Oh, uh, this was something kind of exciting. I just found out the other day. Um, I don't, I don't know if I'd necessarily call it a, a grant, but an opportunity. Um, I applied for with the United States Air Force a couple, uh, months ago, um, and I just found out we won yesterday or the day before. So there's going to be, uh, two female fighter pilots coming to the high school to meet with female athletes to discuss leadership. Um, I was told that they're supposed to be bringing a flight simulator for female athletes to use, and there's some sort of leadership, uh, training segment that goes along with the simulator. And then there's also, um, a small donation to athletics from the air force. So I'm still getting some more of those details, but I was just told that, um, we were awarded this opportunity a day or two ago. And next slide, NJ. Back one. Uh, and lastly, we hosted one of our, uh, first wrestling matches since before COVID. Um, you know, off the cuff, I want to say it's been five or six years since we hosted a wrestling match at Oak Hill. It was, uh, quite a learning opportunity for me as well. Uh, it was awesome. It was a great turnout. We, uh, matched up against Dirigo and we didn't end up winning. Uh, but I think we had some, some good successes. The team kind of rallied and as you can see from the pictures, um, it was fairly eventful evening. Uh, so just kind of wanted to recognize that it was nice to, to see those athletes back at Oak Hill. We have two, uh, wrestlers currently participating on the Lisbon team, um, which are in some of the pictures here, the top right and on the left. So we're hoping to kind of keep growing those numbers and continuing wrestling at Oak Hill since we have quite a, uh, history of wrestling culture here at Oak Hill High School. And I think that's it. NJ, if you want a next slide. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, next slide, NJ. So we, uh, I think we might have talked about this last, uh, meeting, but we, we do have a defensive driving course coming up. It's next week, two nights. Um, it's a way for uh, the community to get their points back for their license. Uh, we, we do need 10 to run it and we're too shy right now, but, um, we've been getting calls pretty frequently, uh, from, uh, panicky students who want to try to get into that class. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that one will run. Um, we also have the babysitter's course certification course coming up that, uh, talked about last time, uh, that's going to be in February. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is a, a new, uh, thing to the adult debt program and, uh, it's going to be put on by, uh, Kelly Gilzo Stoll, and it's a, uh, five week course that will cover a lot of, uh, training, uh, that uh, fall along the guidelines of the four H program. And, um, I'm somewhat familiar with this. My son participated a little bit at, at a certain level this past summer, but excited to have this, uh, being offered to the community and students to get some leadership to be able to possibly lead, um, their own classroom. So, uh, next slide. Uh, and I just want to take a couple of minutes to, uh, kind of, um, provide some information, what, what the difference between the high set versus the high school diploma. I get that question a lot. So the high set is the, uh, equivalence equivalency test for, for the diploma. So it's a series of five tests. I think I talked about that last year. Um, a battery of tests that a student can go through. And the process, when a student comes into our adult debt program, uh, they, we set up an initial intake session with them and we talk to them about what their goals are, what they're trying to accomplish. Do they want to, um, go on to college? Do they want to, uh, just advance in, in a career and a job? Do they want to, uh, enter the military force? So at that intake meeting is really where we try to decide whether the high set's best for them or a high school diploma. So the high set, again, is the, uh, used to be called the GED. More people are familiar with it, uh, being known as the GED, but uh, it's the same thing. It's just a different company. Uh, the high set offers it free for Maine so that we don't have to charge people. And that's why, um, the state chose to go with high set. Um, but when a student comes in, I, I sit down with them and say, uh, you know, what are you looking to accomplish? And the first thing I do is look at what their uh, high school background was, uh, you know, how many credits have they earned coming into, into this meeting? So just to give you an idea that the Oak Hill Adult Dad Diploma is the same credit requirement as a high school diploma. Some programs across the state will offer their own, uh, adult dad diploma, which is a different credential requirement. Some of them may be 18 or, or 20 instead of, um, the, the 24. But, um, but ours is the, is, is a similar to Oak Hill High School Diploma. So I, I try to find out what they have for credits coming in. If a student comes in and, and they've only really established 12 credits, then I may, um, you know, talk to them more about the high set because it's going to be a quicker route for them. Depending on what they want to accomplish, if they, you know, if they're willing to put in roughly two more years, um, to work on their diploma, obviously we'll, we'll work with them with that. But, um, a lot of students that we, we see are looking to try to get a job as quick as they can. So, so they lean towards a high set. Alternatively, if, if somebody comes in and they've got 23 credits or 22 credits, you know, I'll try to convince them to, to go the high school diploma route because it makes more sense. They, they can finish that and be done within, within the year and graduate on time a, and, um, not have to go through the series of tests. So, um, you know, a lot of times we do, we, we do end up with the high set because students are quite a ways away, uh, credit wise from their diploma. But occasionally we will get the student that will come in, um, and really they admittedly want to, want to get their diploma. Colleges look at them very similar. Um, you know, they're accepted at community colleges for either one. The, uh, the military looks at them pretty similar and obviously workplace, um, workplaces look at them, uh, very similar. So there, there, that's, that's really the difference between the high set and diploma. Um, I have some other information items that aren't on slides, but, uh, we have had a, a, a new interest in some students coming in with the new year. I, I usually anticipate that. Uh, New Year's resolutions, I'm going to get back and get my, my, my diploma. So we do get that pretty frequently. Um, the, the, the key is to hold on to them until about April because that's when the weather gets nice and they, and they, uh, look for alternative things to do. But, uh, but we are seeing a good influx of students coming in. Uh, a nice story. I, I don't think I shared this, but we have a high school diploma currently working. Um, uh, she's 58 years old. Uh, her backstory is she was an Oak Hill High School student and her, um, brother passed away while they both were at Oak Hill High School. And, uh, because of the situation, she had to drop out of high school. And she came back to us and, uh, is just thrilled to be doing the work, which, which I don't say a lot about high school diploma students, but, um, I mean, she's calling all the time, wondering if, you know, how much more she can do. But it's just a real nice success story. A lot of times you get the 24, 25 year old that comes back to get their, their diploma. But to see, uh, a 58 year old, uh, come back and be committed and, and put the work in, uh, is, is pretty amazing. So I wanted to share that. Uh, and, and lastly, well, not, not lastly, uh, but we talked about a, offering a Robert's Rules and Meeting Process Workshop. I have spoken with Randy Greenwood. Uh, he's willing to do it. We just, uh, need to nail down a date, uh, and that's hard to do with him, that we would be offering that. And then we'll promote and, and market that, uh, as one of our classes. And then lastly, I was hoping it would be ready, um, at this point, but our brochure is out. And, um, I, I got an email today that the, they're going to mail me a few of the hard copies. We did dedicate a whole page to, uh, working with Katie and John, dedicate a whole page to the bus driving, um, information and how to get certified. So hopefully, you know, that, that's going to hit every house. So hopefully that will help, but, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. All right. We will move down to six, old business. Six point one to approve the second reading of the following policy. J I C H drug and alcohol user by students. Can I get a motion in a second? Anybody?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Did we all fall asleep? Any discussion?
Yes, there is discussion. Um, one of the items is that in previous meetings, we've talked about the reference of the policy J L C A D, which is a medical marijuana policy. And it seems contradictory. Um, and I think this was supposed to come back to policy, but I don't think it did. Um, or maybe we just covered so many, I don't remember Kathy. Um, but when I read it again this morning, I was like, yep, because it says if students are under the influence of marijuana and there's no differentiation of whether or not that is prescribed.
Yep. So, uh, it did go back to policy and the conversation was that it's cross-referenced and because it is referenced in that policy and what they're, the, what they can do with marijuana as a medical is dealt with in that policy, but in this one, it's just, it's not prohibited at all. Or, and the exception is in the cross-reference.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be written here. And that's what I think we shared last time.
Nicole has it. Yes. Okay, Nicole.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, so just to reiterate Kate, uh, Christie's comment, um, that legal reference to that other policy is not there. Or is it one that, um, or if it is there, can you please tell me which one it is? Cause I don't see it. Is it, is, it looks like it's supposed to be J L C D A. We have J L C D, but is there a J L C D A? That should also be cross-reference. And I don't have that one up.
Hold, we're gonna check because there's, I, I, hold on for a moment.
We have that policy, but it is not cross-reference because in terms of drug and alcohol use, it is, it has to go to the medication and then that's where then that policy would then go to the marijuana. So when we talked, I checked with, um, MSSA, they said you just need to do the D, not the A, because the exception to the rule is if it's medication. And then that medication one would then lead you to the marijuana exception to the rule. But this is saying we don't allow it, drug and alcohol use by students. The only exception is if it's medical and then you handle it in that policy. So that's why it was not referenced of the DA.
Okay. And that standard protocol for all of our policies?
Well, case by case, yes. If it, if, if they're, we cross-reference the ones that are applicable.
Right. I've seen some that have the dashes for the additional letter, but if, if we have them there for some, I just think we should be consistent. Um, does that also cover the first paragraph under prohibit conduct? The last part of the sent, of the last sentence that says for any substance that is represented to be a controlled substance. Because we have controlled substances that are prescription. Such as Ritalin that a child would be on.
Again, that would be under the medication policy, not under the drug and alcohol use policy. That's why it's cross-reference.
So that's why I was asking is, is that sentence also covered? Because we don't have a definition of controlled substance in here. So because that medication policy is covered, a child is not, a student is not in violation of this policy as written, because it does reference the medicine, the medical administration.
Doesn't that sentence, or wasn't that sentence put in to go in to cover the cases where somebody has a substance that they're saying is a controlled substance? Has a substance that they're saying is a controlled substance? And therefore, even though it's not, because they're making that. They're making that designation to it as if they're trying to sell it or get somebody to use it. It then becomes under this policy as being prohibited. I think I remember that's why that sentence was put in there. At some time ago.
Remember, this one's under no student shall distribute, dispense, possess, use. I, I think this is just getting at. A controlled substance, they might have taken their parents' controlled substance, brought it to school. And they're distributing it. I, so I.
Or not get, or not using it in the way it was prescribed.
Correct. So.
Well, it says, or be under the influence, so. You're gonna be under the influence of Ritalin if you're taking, even if you're taking it as prescribed. I just wanna make sure we're cautious and careful, that our policies are clear and that there is no. You know, and I, we just wanna make sure that they're clear and consistent. This is my, you know, real first uh, dive into policies here at RSU four, so. If there's no definition, that concerns me, if it doesn't specifically exclude, um, if it's covered in that medicine one, I mean, if. If we're saying that it's covered there. But there, we're not administering it, they're taking their medication at home prior to going to school. So I, I, I have some concerns with that, if it's not entirely clear in the administrating. Administering, excuse me, medication to students. Seems a little different to me.
So remember, this is like the policies that are implemented by the district, so I understand you would like. What I'm hearing is you would like it to say certain things like, unless you are taking it by a prescription as outlined in this policy. So, you know, I don't think there's anything not to do that, this is implementing that. If, so students understand. What the rules are around this. They also have the policy on when they're being prescribed medications, right? So if a student were to be um, questioned about the use of drugs or um, alcohol. The administrators go to these policies and say, where does this fall in the policies? So if they know a student is prescribed Ritalin, they're certainly not gonna discipline them. For having, being under the influence of Ritalin. So I think it comes into play of, why do we have these policies? We have these policies so students understand that this is prohibited.
Well, they're also for parents too, Katie, I appreciate that, that we want the student to understand that. But if, if a parent goes in and reads this and it says, ain't any other controlled substance defined in federal and state laws, regulations. Any look-alike substance or any substance that is represented to be a controlled substance. And this is to be under the influence of, and there is a long list there, that does pull in. Prescribed drugs that, that a student may be taking. And we are, they, we are not administering it, so I'm not su- entirely sure. I'm not saying that it has to indicate something that is part of a cross-reference policy. But I don't know that it would be administering medicine to students because we're not administering. The staff would not be administering it. Or if we had a definition of controlled substance, that would pull it out. That would, that I think would be sufficient. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're careful and, you know, especially in seeing some of the other policies, which we haven't gotten to yet, about neglect and child abuse and things like that. We need to make sure that we're clear on what we're talking about, we're not making assumptions. Um, and that everybody knows what is meant by controlled substance and how to follow the policy.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, yeah. Any other discussion?
Um, I did have two more edits that I, I don't know if you would prefer that I just send them. I don't know how you guys normally do this, I know there's discussion on the policies, but I'm not in the committee. So, how would you go about um, minor edits?
I would email them to Kathy.
Okay. I can do that, thank you.
That, you sure that's the correct way? This is a second reading? That would be appropriate.
Yeah, this is a second, sorry, yep. So, sorry.
Okay.
Roll it back, so what are your um, your um, changes?
Um, in, under the prevention education paragraph. RSU four will provide students with appropriate information and activities focused on educating students about drugs and alcohol. And instead of and, I would say including preventing their use. That's pretty minor, though. Um, so just something that you guys can consider, and then programs shall teach students that the use of drugs and alcohol as a minor. Is what I would add, because saying is wrong and harmful, I mean, it's legal twenty-one and up and it's not wrong. It's, it's, yes, it's harmful and it's illegal, but it's not wrong if you're not a minor. So I would add as a minor.
Correct me, Kathy, are these the same policies that are taken right straight from the law? And this is how they're written in there?
No, these were the suggested.
The suggested.
Or, or what we already had in policy.
Okay.
I'd have to go back because it's not read anymore.
Right, so that, I mean, but this policy is for our students, which will not be twenty-one and greater. And so for the people that for this policy applies to, it is wrong. To consume these, these items. So we have to also consider who this is written for and who it's, who it will be applied to. And in that context, it is only for minors that it's going to be applied to.
Well, parents still read these, so I, I mean, it's, it's directed towards both. However, I understand that it's what the students are to abide by, but the parents need to understand it. Um, if that's the case, I don't think we should be using the word wrong. I mean, I think that they're maybe inappropriate, I mean, wrong is sending a negative connotation. And, you know, they may take that and internalize it and then go and say, you know, they're adult parents or, you know. Family member who's drinking is doing something wrong, uh, I wouldn't use the word wrong in that case. Couple of recommendations that. I think would help clarify the policy and be more beneficial to the students to understand it.
So unless we wanna send this back again for another review and rewrite. Then I, I would suggest that perhaps these comments be put in the packet with this policy for the next review period. To be considered at that time and. And move forward with what we have now. Knowing that every policy can be approved and this could be an improvement for the next cycle.
Oh, when's the next cycle? I mean, why kick something down the road? I don't, I don't know what the.
Well, we're gonna kick it down the road one way or the other, we kick it down the road for a few weeks or we kick it down the road to the next cycle. And, and that's if everybody agrees with the comments and the changes, or not everybody, but the majority.
Majority, yep. What, when's the next cycle? Review cycle?
Probably a few years.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait a few years. So.
So then for, we would have to vote on each one of your suggestions of whether we want to make those changes, since this is a second reading. Unlike if it was a first reading. So, we would have to take up each one of your suggestions. To see if we wanna make that change in this policy tonight. Or we could take the issue off, send it back for consideration by the committee. And then they make their recommendation on what to change, if anything, and bring it back for a second reading again.
Do I have anybody who would like to rescind their motion? To send it back to committee?
I would, I don't know if you want my vote or somebody else's.
It would be the person who made the motion to approve.
It would be the person who made the motions who would need to remove their uh, motion, so. Um, neither of them have spoken, so I'd like to go ahead and move on with the vote for the policy. Um, we will go ahead and do roll call. Doug? Doug?
Yeah, I'm mute.
Alright. Um. Clear?
So we're just voting right now, I need just a yes or a no.
Breaking up a lot on my end.
Okay, so Doug, can you type into the chat yes or no? Laura's asking for clarification on the motion. So the motion is to approve the second reading of the following policy, J I C H Drug and Alcohol User by Students. That's the motion that is on the floor and that is what we are voting on. Okay, I'll move on, Diane?
You're muted, Diane?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Christie? No. Brandon? Did anyone hear Brandon or?
No, I didn't hear Brandon.
Yes?
Thank you, Nicole?
No.
Laura I saw said no. And I'm a yes, and I still don't get an answer from Doug.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Doug, yes, no? Yes, okay. So that was. So let them do the calculation, yeah, Kathy and, uh, are you doing the weight?
Yep, working on it, I think it passes. Sam, can you check me?
Sam is not on, she had to leave the meeting, but she didn't turn her uh, camera off, she's dealing with um, something. We're good. So it passes?
What is, what is the voted weight?
What the weight, yeah, hold on. I have to get Scott, um. Christie.
It's five fifty-nine to four forty-two.
Oh wait, no.
Can't be.
Nope, five fif- five fifty-nine to three sixty-three.
Yes, that makes sense.
That makes more sense, thank you. Alright, we will move down to seven, New Business, seven point one, to approve a two-day, out-of-state, two-game preseason trip. For the Oak Hill High School baseball team on March twenty-ninth through the thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Game one at Eaping High School in Eaping, New Hampshire, and game two at. Penn Tucket Regional High School in Newbury, uh, Massachusetts. And I believe Brian is here to kinda give us some detail on that.
Uh, yes, Jill, thank you, just a couple of things, um, we did have a couple of athletes who. Were gonna be, um, sorry, switching to the, the agenda item there. Um, a couple of athletes who are gonna be speaking tonight, you all should have received an itinerary um, from Chad Stoll. I'm just gonna kinda reiterate that uh, you know, this is something that the baseball team has done in the past uh, quite often. And they're kinda bringing it back, um, you know, to go to Epping High School and um, Penn Tucket and uh. You know, hopefully get to some warmer weather and drier fields, and I know uh, Coach Chad Stoll is on this as well. I think he um, was gonna offer a few other comments and see if there was any questions or discussion on that, so I'm gonna hand it over to Coach Stoll this time.
Yes, thank you, Brian, uh, good evening, um, I sent out an email to everybody um, on the school board and the directors um, this afternoon with the plan. Uh, that we have uh, put forth, we have um, a couple of different plans. Um, you know, one um, that we can try to get outside a little bit earlier. Um, I've reached out to both coaches at Epping High School and Penn Tucker Regional High School. Um, we are right now scheduled for two games, um, potentially they might, we might be, be able to play a little bit longer. Uh, we might go and play uh, two, actual two games on Saturday and one game on Friday. Uh, but uh, if we can't get down to Epping or Penn Tucket earlier, uh, we're gonna go down to the Edge in uh, in Portland. Which is an indoor baseball training facility and uh, get a workout in there, um, we've gone down there in the past, it's uh, it's a really nice indoor facility. Um, and then make our way down to um, Epping. Um, we're gonna spend the night in Amesbury, Massachusetts, which is a uh, a town in northeast Massachusetts, which is pretty much centrally located in between both schools. And then um, that's pretty much the sum of the trip, um, the trip's costs are provided by um, our fundraising account. Um, we've done a couple of fundraisers over the last couple of years that were pretty successful, um, selling raffle tickets and um, running um, some youth clinics. Um, in the summer and in the spring. Um, so all the costs for the uh, transportation and hotels is gonna be provided for that. The student athletes will have to take care of lunch on, lunch and supper on Friday and then uh, lunch on Saturday. And if anybody else has any other questions, I would feel free to fire away.
Are you gonna cancel this out if it's raining like crazy that weekend?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna keep touch, um, keep uh, touch base with the coaches. Both coaches, um, their leagues actually open up four days uh, after that, they open up on the Thursday of that following week, so. Um, snow-wise, we're hoping we'll be alright, but I mean, of course, you know, if it's raining like cats and dogs, um, we're, we're not gonna go down.
Any other discussion?
I move that we approve this baseball. Training trip.
I second.
So we will again do roll call? I'm gonna start with Laura. Okay, Laura says yes, okay, Nicole?
Yes.
Brandon? Brandon? Okay, Christie? Yes. So that was a double yes from Brandon and Christie. Bob?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And did Doug leave? Because I don't see him.
No, he's there.
He's there, his face is gone.
Probably had him type it.
Okay. I'm a yes, so it's approved. Have fun.
Thank you.
We will move down to seven point two. Um, we're going to move down to approve the fir- the first reading of the following policies. Our first one will be B E D H, Public Participation in Board of Director Meetings. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have.
Whoa, hang on.
To make a motion to.
Gonna mute Douglas.
Yes. Can you?
Can you?
Okay. Laura, you can go first.
Um I did, I did kind of type my comment in before Christie made the motion. Um would I be able to make an amendment to the motion to no concerns that everyone's having? I can type it.
I'm not sure. We're on policy B E D H.
That went by too quick.
She's saying because of the audio and people having a hard time communicating that that would be moved, that these policies would wait is what I'm reading in her comments. And Nicole has her hand up.
Okay, Nicole?
I was gonna wait in line for comment, but if if Laura, if Laura can make this amendment, um I would second it. I don't know what the protocol is for the amendment that she wants to make right now.
I think that'd be amendment to this policy. We could, if if the idea is to pull all of these off for first reading and bring them back in two weeks or a month, whenever, then it would be asking people to re- remove the motion and the second and then a new motion be made to table these until a future meeting or tabling is not a good one because then you have to vote to bring them up. But you to schedule them for the next meeting. So if that's the intent, then that's how you would have to handle it. Amendment to this motion will not affect any motion other than this one.
Did you understand that?
I did. So that means Christie or and Diane would have to remove the motion, withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Now.
I no longer have a comment.
So now then somebody needs to make a new motion.
So a motion, go ahead, Christie.
I make a motion to move the following policies and I'm going to try to list them all. Um B E D B.
Just list the item numbers.
Oh, yep. Yes, I need to look at the real agenda then. Hold on, sorry.
Just do seven point two, Christie.
Thank you. I make a motion to move agenda items seven point two to new business at our next scheduled board meeting.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, any discussion.
I've got an echo. I'm at the Grand Canyon. If there's no discussion, I will call a roll call for the vote. Diane?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Laura was a yes. Me, yes. Doug? Motion uh carries. Um so we will move on to seven point three, the budget meeting calendar.
Yes, I asked NJ if she would put it up on. Alright. Um so this is just reviewing. Uh Jill and I talked about how to best handle this budget season and when to start and you know, um opportunity for the um public to have input before it goes to public meeting. So you can see, can you blow that up a little bit, NJ? For me, so I can see a little bit better. Um so as I talked, I believe at the last meeting, um there'd be a budget kickoff on um February twenty-eighth. So some of these dates have been listed on the agenda so that you had them early enough to mark your calendars. Um but that would be kind of our kickoff of talking about um the goals for the budget, talking about some hot topics that came out of last budget to just kind of everybody having opportunity to talk about what's top of mind and giving direction to administration around um budget development. So we're in budget development right now, but we would like um some feedback on February twenty-eighth and and to hear from uh the board's perspective. Then that gives us some time to respond to what we hear on February twenty-eighth and adjusting the superintendent's proposed budget, which comes first. Um as you all make it your budget um throughout this process. Then March thirteenth, we'll go over cost centers one through seven. Um Kathy Martin's doing a a great job of putting together a budget page for um the website so that this will be there, some definitions around cost centers and what they mean. So as we heard feedback throughout the budget season last year, we're we're responding to that to be proactive. Then March twentieth, we'll cover cost centers eight through eleven. So we're gonna do expenditures first. Um what's making up the budget, what what are what's being asked for, what are the needs? Then March twenty-seventh, we'll go over revenue um and our essential program service um revenue, that's the state calculations. It is already out. Um the EPS is posted, it is public. Um but we are gonna dive deeper into it on March twenty-seventh. Um and then we will have on April third, a budget deliberation. This is an opportunity to say, this is all that we've heard. Where do we stand? This gives the board an opportunity to um it's a special meeting, will be a special meeting. So just this will be the only discussion, which is how, what do we want to bring forward to the April tenth regular meeting? That will have an agenda item that will allow bu- uh public um feedback. So you'll be able to do your budget deliberation, bring something forward on the tenth, allow the public to respond to that. And then uh based on that, we have April vacation, so we obviously are not gonna be meeting. And then following April vacation, the board will do a budget approval. And then that budget will go to the May fifteenth um budget uh public budget meeting. So that's what we've laid out um based on feedback, based on uh input around what happened through our budget season last year. So um we're just giving you an FYI that this is calendar. If there's something that you want to give us feedback on, you know, please do, and then we can make adjustments.
Thank you, Katie. So we will move down to seven point four, a transportation discussion. And ahead of this discussion, I just want to also make sure that I remind you that this is not a personnel discussion, that if you have something about personnel, that we cannot discuss it here during an open session meeting. So I'm gonna leave the floor to Katie and Jonathan for their presentation.
Yeah, so the, you know, and I know we're gonna have probably issues with um audio as well. So if there's questions, put it in and if we have to you know, move it and do another time as well, you know, we can look at that. Um so as you know, I I put out a transportation update. And so this is just kind of just getting us back in the mode of where we are in transportation. And you know, um a- as you know, this is something that's been a high priority for the district around one of those uh uh moments in time when we had several uh drivers go out on leave, which left, you know, obviously buses uncovered. And so we understand this has been a hardship, um frustration, anger. We 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 get it. We 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 do and um we've been really working hard and obviously we didn't have a lot of response initially. And now when it rains, it pours. We're having a ton of responses. Um so we're gonna update you on some of that. So if um NJ or whomever's gonna share the presentation, I think I would have a hard time because it's gonna take over my screen unless I'm not doing it right.
I believe Kathy's presenting.
Kathy, are you able to do that?
It's not allowing me to, so NJ, you're gonna have to do it.
Yep, can you share it with me real quick and I'll bring it right up?
You already shared it.
Yeah, you should have it, I think. And now how do I get out of what I just did? Escape?
It's saying transportation update. It's reshared.
It won't be. I think I sent it to the board before the meeting, so you all should have it. Um but just so the public has it and then it will be obviously in the packet for the minutes for from this meeting. Um so as she's pulling that up, the first slide really, I just just so everybody has big picture around how is the transportation handled um within the district. Here we go. Um so we're on the second second slide. NJ, if you wanna go there, okay. So um as you know, we have a director of operations and um as Jonathan pointed out this evening, he wears four hats. He covers maintenance, he covers facilities, and he covers transportation as well as emergency management. So that's why he's called the director of operations, as we've heard other districts have directors of um transportation as well as director of operations. So sometimes the job is split up and 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 RSH four, they're combined. Um so he oversees uh the custodial staff um as well and the bus driving staff and the trip coordinator. So we added the trip coordinator in the sense that we had a head bus driver that was doing trip coordinator and driving a bus and found it um unmanageable. And so in discussing um that position, that position was shifted from really a head bus driver handling, the responsibility of trip coordinator to the trip coordinator position. Um that person does communications, does the routes, um does paperwork, uh oversees the van sign out, uh van use and overseeing trips and having drivers assigned to those. The, for example, working um with a new driver coming on to cover the green bus, she's preparing all of that. Um the uh a turn by turn um route for the new driver so that the new driver can be practicing that route before coming on and doing that. And then there's the drivers that do the daily runs, uh work on student safety, handle trips and also communicates with families um as students go come on and off the bus. Um so there there, that is what makes up our transportation department. Next slide. And so just so people understand what what are what are our buses, how many buses, how many drivers and so forth. So we have full-time bus driver positions. Um we have ten. And these are those um colors. So right now we have a green bus driven by Cliff and we've hired a new driver that his initial responsibilities will be to drive the green run until Cliff is able to come back. Then we have the pink bus by that's driven by John. Yellow is Dee. The black is Armin. Um and currently Kathy is covering black run um until Armin is able to return. And then we have the silver bus, which is Candy. Um and then we have gold, which is Tammy, blue, which is Sue, purple, which is April, red um would be Kathy's s- assigned route. However, she's gonna stay with black until we either make adjustments, um have a new driver that would go to black, which would allow Kathy. And um so that red, you know, we have to every time we hire someone, we wanna make the best decision um in what is the highest need. Um and then we have the brown bus that would be a new hire. Um what we've added in there, which you can't see, it's at the bottom. I'm not sure why it's getting cut off. Um what we discussed, because we have a number of people um now interested in full-time driving, um no, look, stay back, I'm not there yet, okay? No, they're going backward, forwards, but backwards. So the full-time bus driver position, what we talked about is a per- a a permanent sub position. So we don't have this budgeted, but what we looked at at the salary lines that we have, could we afford to have an additional person um for the rest of the school year? Um be on our payroll so that when a bus driver is out, that person would sub in. And when all buses were running, that person would do other things like um help support anything to do with transportation. Um or it might be something they can do in helping with um facilities or maintenance. So that person wouldn't just stay home because we didn't have someone else. We would be assigning them different projects and and so forth for the transportation department. Um so that is hopefully to help out that as we bring people on to do certain runs, one, are we gonna open red? When will we open red? Are we gonna open brown? When will we open brown? Or do we still have people out on leave that need um coverage? Or do we wanna make sure we have people available for anticipated openings? I mean, uh absences. So you will see in the budget, proposed budget, that's gonna come forward adding this type of line to the budget, that we have a permanent sub onboard. In addition, we still will have hiring substitute. So as somebody calls and says, I'm just looking for part-time work. I don't want a full-time run. I want more part-time. And we say, well, do you wanna go in the sub list? We still will have sub list. So people who do come forward and say um I don't need full-time work, I can do part-time, we will, we will obviously work with that. Um so that, so now you can go to the next slide. So on, so obviously that's our main hub is making sure we can get kids to and from school. There are other things that we have going on to support different runs that aren't the main routes. Um and so as I've said before, we have two MSAD seventy-five drivers that are available when they're not doing their regular runs to do mid-runs. They're doing uh pre-K runs right now. And they're willing to do trips that are in the evening or in the weekends um that don't interfere with their main runs. Now, as we bring folks onboard, folks that are asking for more hours and saying, well, I want more than my regular route, obviously, we're going to prioritize those folks. And the MSAD seventy-five drivers may become those um trip drivers or mid-run of that we need in case of absences. Um and then we had an uh MSAD eleven driver come forward and say, you know, if I can be any help, I have my main runs for sad eleven, but I'm willing to do trips. So if I'm available, so please, you know, let me know what might, some trips coming out and I'll see what I can do to help out. We also have um a coach, our, one of our football coaches that has his driver's license, um often does the football uh trips um when they're doing um competitions. And he does a part of the LRTC driver and run. So our route from the Oak Hill High School to Lewiston Regional Technical Center and the Auburn Satellite Technical Center, we have um that person doing part of the LRTC run. And then we have one of our drivers doing part of the L uh LRTC run. And then as we bring drivers on, we can talk about whether that's something they would also do. We have a Lisbon driver that does a part of the LRTC um responsibilities uh a couple of days a week. And then we have an alternative runs. So we have an alternative program. We're students um go home midday and we pick up new students um for the afternoon session. And currently they're driving vans and that's the Oak Hill High School administration are driving that route right now. Um Marco does it, Brian and Jim talk about who's available to do those runs and they're covering the alternative runs. Again, as we bring these new drivers on um and they are looking for more hours, they will be assigned to those uh runs. Um, and they are looking for more hours, they will be assigned to those uh runs so that that it's a bus doing that. Um, we have, as we've stated, currently in training, so we have been really. Um, people who call and say, you know, I have my CDL, but I don't have my bus driver endorsement. We talk to them, here's what you need to do, we help them um know what that is. And we tell them if we upon hiring, we're going to reimburse you for your cost to get your bus driver's endorsement. Um, we have one waiting for the state road test. Um, we've had Kathy Perry and April and Tammy. Um, working with those folks for um behind the wheel training. And so somebody who comes in with a class A CDL license. Um, can move much quicker because they have one of the highest standards for driving a big, obviously a big vehicle. And so we have one person who paperwork has gone in and they're waiting for a date for their test. We have one completing behind the wheel training. And then we have one that is uh testing for the commercial learner's permit and that's a teacher, we have a teacher that. Um, his programming, we um. He likes to have a lot of field trips in his programming, that's uh Tim, the PE teacher. And um, so he's he's completed the online course and he is getting ready to test for his written test for his commercial learner's permit. Um, and uh Jonathan, you want to add updates because you had some more updates today?
Yep, um, so I've had uh in the past couple of days, I've had a few phone calls from um people within the community, people outside of the community looking. Um, a lot of them actually uh already having some form of of CDL, be it in A or B. Um, various endorsements, um but not the passenger and the school bus endorsement that's required to be a bus driver, so. I've gotten a lot of um of people interested in in learning and what it would take to become a bus driver, so I've sent them all. Of our checklist items, um walk them through how to um go about the process and then uh obviously periodically checking in with them. Um, I've got numerous um applications uh from from individuals through Indeed. Um, cold call uh from individuals, so we're getting a lot of uh traffic, um which is great. Um, so you know, certainly pointing people in the right direction, here's how you get your license. Um, and then just making sure that we're telling people. Um, what we have currently for openings, uh be it full-time, be it at a sub-capacity. Um, and and making sure that they're very transparent um with where we're at currently.
Okay, um, and then it's I've you've heard this, we reimburse for their training costs, so it's about two hundred dollars for the online initial. Get to get you up to your written and then um the cost for them to take their written test. Their um behind the wheel exam. And so we would obviously upon hire reimburse for those. Uh, and then our drivers who are training, so they do that after hours at different on uh points of the day or weekend or evening. They are document, they're um clocking in around how long they're taking and they're getting paid to train folks. Um, next one, next slide, so um. You know, recruitment, driver recruitment. Um, and you've heard this, so next slide NJ, um, we've been advertising um in multiply and a lot of it um came from. Um, your feedback around, could you, could you do this, could you try that, have you thought of this? So um, we've been uh unemployment sites, as Jonathan said, indeed has been giving us some applicants, we have. In our adult ed flyer, um Jim has put that information in there. We do social media with our website and Facebook, um repeatedly posting. We have signage, we did the road signs, we have the bus sign, um we've done posters. And then, of course, probably the biggest traction a lot of time is word of mouth. Um, people talking to people, you know, somebody mentions, well, you know, I have my CDL. Oh, have you thought of driving? You should call, they're training, they're training to get bus driver endorsements. Um, and then they give us a uh give us um a shout out. I will say, um, people probably know the name Phil. Phil, who was our sub-driver in the fall before he goes to Florida. Um, which we begged him not to go to Florida, but you know, he drives a bus in Florida when he goes down there. Um, he called us, he keeps, he keeps in touch with us. Um, he called us this we uh last week and said, I'm on social media, I'm on my Facebook page, I. Saw this couple that is moving to Maine, they both are driving buses in another state. I I told them, give you a call, reach out, and so they did. Um, they're not in Maine yet, um but we told them when they're in Maine and if they land, because they're looking at different places in Maine to live. They land near us to give us a call, so it's that word of mouth, people listening, watching. Talking to folks that um also give us a lot of traction, which is, which is great. Um, and then we were asked about uh in addition, handling busing behavior, so that's our next slide. And Jonathan, you want to talk about handling busing behaviors?
Yep, sure, so um as you can see here, um I'll go down the list a little bit and elaborate on a few. Um, so establishing behavior norms, so uh that, you know, starts in the classroom. Uh, and with the bus driver and really just establishing with students, um. You know, what is, what is the expectation, um what are, what are we uh as bus drivers or or teachers expecting from uh from you, the student? Uh, for behavior and and uh what are you expecting, you know, of us to keep you safe on the drive? So establishing good behavior norms uh and building that trust initially uh can really mitigate those uh behaviors. Um, increased awareness from the bus drivers, um of course, they have to keep their eyes on the road and everything uh else around them in order to keep students safe on the bus, but also just. Um, you know, keeping an eye on students and making sure uh bus behaviors are are um appropriate. Um, we do have camera footage review if we have to review any uh behaviors, um and then and then act accordingly with them. Um, you know, in coordination with with building principles. Um, assigned seating is necessary, sometimes that's all it takes is just separating a couple kiddos, the behaviors uh sort of dissipate and then fix themselves. Um, doing, you know, continued bus safety with Megan Brown um in the in the schools and then also uh good behavior recognition, um. So uh um, so one of the elementary uh level teachers, I I believe, or excuse me, principal, I believe Michaela had uh created some um bus recognition. Cards, um and and in essence, uh the bus driver hands them out to a student who uh, you know, shows or displays good behavior. Um, and of course, that positive reinforcement with um with students is really a a great way to to mitigate, um, you know, negative behaviors in the future.
And finally, just, you know, I I we can't say it enough and and it's it's really. Just thank you, just big thank yous to our drivers for the hard work. Um, getting students to and from school with all, you know, flexibility and and having to cover and and do added things. Um, and then our school secretaries, our trip coordinator, just kind of communicating with families. With the buses, you know, everybody's on the radios during um pickup and drop-off. Uh, to try to make sure everybody gets home safely and addressing any concerns. And then our families that have just stepped up and we know it's been tough and providing transportation when needed. Um, we just, we appreciate the support and understanding of um our families as we work through these. Um, this this challenging time with transportation. You know, we're hoping in the next uh months that we'll be fully up again, um. With every route covered and with um additional drivers that can sub when there's absences. So um, I know it's felt like, my gosh, when will this end and we we felt it too. Um, and the good news is we have people finishing up training, we have people calling, we have people leaving other districts. So um, we're, we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Jonathan and Katie, um, so if you have any, I. Can we stop sharing the screen? There we go, thank you, so I can see everybody. Um, if you have a question or a discussion point from uh um one of our school board, please raise your hand so I can call on you. Nicole? Nicole, you have your hand raised?
Could you hear me?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, it said I was muted by the host when uh when the conversation started from transportation about transportation. Um, so I wasn't able to get off mute, my hand. Okay, thank you, Katie, um, I appreciate all of this information, I think it's very helpful, I think it is. Um, definitely something that the community wants to hear. Um, it gives them concrete details regarding. You know, what we are doing, how we are trying to combat this continuous um and. An expected issue. So I appreciate all that, um, I do want, I don't want to rain on anybody's parade. Um, and I don't want to take away all that great progress. Um, that we just heard, um, I do want to make sure that we don't become complacent and that we continue to move forward. Um, we have heard before Thanksgiving and before February vacation that they were hope, we were hopeful. Um, so I feel like maybe you keep jinxing yourself with that. Um, and now with purple bus down, which wasn't expected, uh I just want to make sure that we continue, we don't let up. Um, I have heard from the community about the bus um in the corner uh of the one thirty-two, one twenty-six, so that's great. Um, I think that sign is great, gets more attention than the little signs. Um, so I'm I'm very happy with um. The what we're trying to do and I just want to make sure we continue, we don't. We don't um stall at all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I do see that um Laura asked some things. Um, you know, we certainly can talk to Jim about whether he can do just a a bus driver, get to know course, we definitely can talk to him about that. Um, and. Let's see. Yep, uh, oh, I we, it's hard to do advertising on schools buses, I don't know, Jonathan, if you want to speak about that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know all the laws, um, as it pertains to advertising on a school bus, I do know that there are uh obviously certain. Parts of a bus, I think. It would, you know, similarly apply to your 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 own car, you can't plaster your windshield with with something, it's it's a, you know, impeding your view on your own, on your own vehicle. So buses have similar um and more actually more strict rules about where you can place certain things, um. Be advertising or not, so I can obviously look into that a little bit more, um, but I think there's pretty standard and strict rules on what can and can't be on a bus. But I always happy to entertain and and look into, certainly.
Um, yeah, thanks Laura, uh, about your your daughter noticing. Uh, or your son noticing the sign. Um, the other thing about we, we did talk about reimbursement for mileage for parents, we did consider that. Um, and then, you know, you 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 talk it out, you talk it out and you think, okay. Is it when the parent leaves the house, is it when the parent is uh going from their work, is it? Going, I mean, we really talked a lot about how would you regulate that or not regulate it? And then talking about, um, you know, we're offering supervision, so we did talk about it. Um, and you know, we've had parents, certain parents calling around help with support, especially daycares. Um, around mileage, so. You know, we we have not offered that, we've discussed it. Um, you know, we're hopeful now to like, like Nicole said, keep the momentum going, believe me. We're, we're with you, Nicole, to say, we might have to hire people in anticipation, right? We don't want to not give up people knowing we might have a retirement, might have something, you know. Changing so loud and clear, but we did discuss that a lot about um uh reimbursement. Um, and so obviously, if we got into a another big crisis like this, we'd have to bring that back. Around um talking about those things. Um, I do appreciate parents, you know, calling and really talking out, how can we help, how can we support? And then talking to drivers, is there any way to help this particular family? I mean, we had one family really having a tough time the other day and said, is there any way you can get them home? And and we managed it, you know, we had, uh, we got a van out there and said, okay, we got to get this. So we try when, you know, people are reaching out and saying, is there any way today, there's this, I'm especially the day we, you know, we um dismissed early. Now, is there any way you can help support us in any way? And you know, we do our best, we we are really. Open-minded to try to do our best. And um, so. It it's not, it has not been easy.
Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you, Laura, thank you for your notes.
Okay, so we will move down to eight committee.
No, I just really Laura, yeah, we put slides about power school today on, but videos. If if Kathy, can you capture what Laura, Laura, will you make a copy of that and just send it to us so we have the feedback?
Okay, can I keep going?
Yes.
Okay, um, committee reports, our finance and facilities committee.
Okay, can you guys hear me all right?
Much better.
I I said fifteen minutes ago or so, I swapped to my phone, I didn't realize that's so much better than the computer would be, but so. Okay, um. So the facilities and finance committee, we went over the December thirteenth minutes. Um, the copier RFP. It, the school is going through a bidding agent. Um, and that's going out for bid. Um, it should be, should be hearing back around March-ish or so, March or so. Um, and they'll present options for us as far as um how we're going to move forward. Um, Oak Hill High School Insurance Claim Project was discussed. Um, uh, mostly that dealt with Mr. Crocker's lab and um Mr. Varney covered that in his slides for the meeting, so that was. Um, kind of gone over already again. Uh, we went over the finance report, everything seems to be pretty much on track, um, there's a couple of. Um, revenue things that need to come in, but there it's pretty typical that they're a little bit behind as far as the ampian credits and. Um. Uh, checks and stuff, that kind of thing, state subsidies. Uh, insurance is going through an RFP, which again, a request for proposals. Um, it should be posted soon and I, we were given a timeline of about four to six weeks or so to hear back from that. And then the spare spare buses, the topic of spare buses. Um, maybe potentially, should we sell or whatnot? Um, was kind of thrown out there, but that's mostly going to be um brought up more at the next facilities and finance committee meeting. And then um. SPS heat was um. We were hoping for some sort of grant funding to kind of address some of that and um that turned out to not get funded is what we were told. And then. Um, we kind of, last thing was discussion of major construction. Um, kind of grant funding, that kind of thing. And the deadline, if I heard right, at the time, it was still kind of buggy, deadline was August twenty-fourth, August of two thousand twenty-four for that, something like that. And that was what we tried to cover today.
Thank you, Doug, any questions or comments for Doug? All right, uh CIA technology was canceled due to we could not have um two Zoom meetings going at once. We will move down to um board member comments. Please raise your hand so that I know that you want to make a comment. Nicole?
Hello, um, I just wanted to also thank you, Katie, for the all-call that came out. Was that today, today? About tomorrow's potential, I think just giving parents a head heads up on what they might, I mean. We could all sit there and speculate what you might do, but just knowing ahead of time. What options you're considering, I think is going to help everybody plan better. Um, to be able to be a little bit more prepared, I think that's all we're asking. And I think that helps promote the transparency and the open communication that everybody is looking for. Uh, so I did want to thank you for that, I was, I was really happy when I received that.
You you might, you might hear the same message tomorrow because Friday's Friday's looking similar for that commute again.
That's fine, yeah, right? We just have an idea of what we. We just have an idea of what we might, might have to, might expect. So.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Yeah.
Christie? Sorry, Nicole, were you done? I'm so sorry.
No, I was saying, and that's it. So I didn't know if you were waiting for me to say anything more.
Christie?
Well, I was going to also say thank you for the call, Katie. I thought that was a really great, just heads up for those of us that do have young children, just trying to navigate all of those, like coordinating pieces can be a little difficult at 5:00 AM. Also, I had the amazing opportunity to chaperone the last middle school dance, which was sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I just want to, I just want to, I just want to give a kudos to our students. Because it was just really awesome to see them together and just like be so kind to one another and just really respectful. And there was a lot of parent volunteers. The fundraiser for the eighth grade class. And it was just a really well-done event. So kudos to the kids and our staff and our families for being engaged with our kiddos. And it was just a, it was a good experience.
Sure. Thank you, Christie. Anyone else? Should we read, I, should we read what Laura wrote? I'm not sure. I'm assuming, I think there was a comment.
We captured them and have downloaded them.
Okay.
She also emailed them to the board.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want her to not have her turn to be added to the agenda. Anyone else? Anything else? All right. So just so that you know, we are a little off meeting script. Our next meeting is the first Tuesday of the month. So it will be Tuesday, February seventh at 6:30. Wait, did I say that right? Yes, okay. But if there is no objection, I would like to declare this meeting adjourned at eight fifty, eight sixteen.